Okay. All right, so welcome everyone to this special session on experimental applications of the thermodynamic dynamics. It's a great pleasure to welcome Professor Yael Roshman from Tel Aviv University. Professor Roshman is a PhD from Technion University in 2004. He was then at New York University before joining back to Tel Aviv University into 2008. Professor Roshman's lab is interested in understanding physical processes and systems which are driven out of thermoequilibrium. And in particular, she uses optical tweezers to manipulate prime microscopic objects. So we've been hearing theoretical talk especially by Professor Luca Pekiti and Edgar on information aspects of the stochastic thermodynamics. So Professor Roshman will tell us about experimental realization of some of these content. So today she is going to talk to us about active matter and driven matter in information engines. So Professor Roshman, please.
Thank you for having me. So let's see. So as mentioned, I will talk about active matter and driven matter information engines. And maybe I will start first with systems that happen in thermal equilibrium and then compare what happens in the active matter information engines and tell you maybe a little bit about what I mean about it. But to start my talk, I will start with some introduction and motivation for working with colloids, which is one of the systems we're working in in my lab. Then I'll tell you a little bit about what is a Maxwell demon, a Zillard engine and all everything that has to do with information engines. And and discuss a bit about how we realize information engines, we're using optical tweezers. First, in equilibrium for a, or actually a driven particle out of equilibrium, but a single particle information machine. Later, I will tell you a little bit about a many body information engine where there is more than just one particle and and what is the difference that comes up from there? And then I will switch and tell you a little bit about our systems of active matter. Why even look at active matter based information engines? And then discuss a little bit about the difference between driven or various ways of active matter and and how that affects information engines operating on them. So let me start by telling you a little bit about colloids. Why do we like colloid? So first of all, what you can see here is a movie of one and a half micron silica beads floating in water and diffusing. And you can see that using image analysis, single particle tracking, we were following these particles and they exhibit Brownian motion, which means that they are big enough to see in the microscope on the level of each particle, unlike molecules. They are affected by thermal fluctuations, but they're small enough for us to be able to, first of all, for them to feel thermal fluctuations, but also for us to image many of them. So this is why we like working with our colloidal particles. A second reason why we like to work with colloidal particles is because you can use laser tweezers in order to trap and manipulate them. So for example, here you see a set of holographic optical tweezers that trap colloidal particles in place and a move around the the ones that are supposed to be the flames of these candles. As we have soon upcoming the Hanukkah holiday. Another thing you can do with holographic optical tweezers is you can change the shape of the beam. Instead of having a Gaussian beam, you can have a helical beam which carries angular momentum. And then if you trap particles on that beam, they are trapped on a ring of light, each photon carrying angular momentum, which is important then on the particles and these particles start rotating. Now, this is a dream driven dissipative system out of equilibrium because you're driving your particles forever, but they never leave your field of view. So you can actually perform and we have done many experiments on them. And finally, you can do something a little more sophisticated. You can implement feedback protocols into your trapping. So you have a blue dot here and whenever we observe a colloid getting into that dot, we turn on a laser light and kick it to the right. This very small perturbation on the motion of many particles creates, on average, a significant perturbance on the density field that goes as, I mean, it's a power law decay of the density, but it it actually, we see the effect, if this is one micron, we see the effect for fourteen microns ahead. So that this is the last reason why we like colloidal particles and this is because we can really control them. And the way we control them is using optical tweezers. Optical tweezers are just nothing more than very tightly focused laser beams. The glass beads or the plastic beads that we use are the electric particles. So they get polarized in the field of the light, the electromagnetic field of the light. And this polarization, you can think of them as a dipole in an electric field, which means that they are drawn to the highest gradient of intensity and also can be moved by the gradients of phase of the light. And playing with the intensity gradient you can do by playing with the refractive index of the bead as compared to the liquid around it. So the sign of the force, the optical force depends on 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 this. Is the refractive index of the particle larger or smaller than the refractive index of the medium? So we can basically operate with optical tweezers either to attract particles or to repel them. And we're going to use the repulsion mode today, among other things. Radiation pressure is also something that it can can be used in order to drive particles around. And the optical tweezers were awarded the Nobel Prize in 2018 recently. So this has been really a useful tool. The forces that we can apply are around around piconewtons. And the particle size that we're using is about, but we're using all usually micron scale particles, but you could use anything between five nanometers to fifty micron depending on the internal dipole of the material. Okay, so a single optical tweezer is just a laser beam that is inserted into a microscope. And so you see by that microscope is depicted here by the objective lens. What we do is we replace one of the mirrors in the path of the beam with a spatial light modulator.
Professor Roshman, I guess means what would be NP and NM?
Sorry?
In the last slide, you had NP and NM. Would you please fill what it was?
Wow, I can't hear.
In the last slide, the previous slide.
This one?
Yeah, NP and NM. So could you please say what you, explain what was meant?
NP is the refractive index of the particle and NM is the refractive index of the medium, the water, the fluid that is around.
Thank you.
Okay. Right, so so if you take the path of the beam and you replace one of the mirrors by a spatial light modulator, this is a liquid crystal display that can impart a phase pattern on your beam, then this phase pattern that you project on the beam is then Fourier transformed into the sample plane to give you an intensity pattern. And we know how to calculate this phase pattern to get almost any shape of beam that we would like to, changing the type of beam or just creating an array of dots wherever we want. And in this case, what you're seeing is a hologram that creates a three row array of dots in the z axis. So this is like a wall. And if we were going to operate this in the negative force, so the repelling force, a configuration of the tweezers, then this will be a wall that a particle cannot pass through. So this is the colloidal point of view. And now let me say a few words about Maxwell's demon and all of this stuff. So I guess most of you know what a Maxwell's demon is. But just to be clear, we have an intelligent being that is looking at a chamber filled with the gas, ideal gas molecules. Some of them are colder than average, some of them are warmer than average. And whenever the demon sees a cold particle trying to go from right to left, it opens a trap door without touching any of the other molecules and lets it through. If there is a hot molecule that wants to go to the right, that is okay also. However, if a warm molecule wants to go to the left or a cold molecule wants to go to the right, the demon closed the door, so this cannot happen. And the demon is doing this repeatedly. It's measuring the molecule that is approaching the wall and deciding if to open or close the door. And if it's done this enough times, then you will get to a situation in which the left side is full only of colder than average molecules and the right side only warmer than average molecules, which means that I've created a two different heat paths from one heat path, which means I can now operate an engine in between these two paths. And I also reduced the entropy of the system. So the question is, how can this be? How can I reduce the entropy of the system without actually doing any work on it? This seems to contradict the second law of thermodynamics. Of course, today, nobody believes that we violated the second law here. We we have a few ways to resolve this problem. One way is to say the demon itself and the system are not really decoupled. They are coupled somehow, they belong to a larger universe. And when the demon reduces the entropy of the the reservoir it's looking at, it has increased the entropy of the environment at least at the same amount, if not more. And there is the Landau or principle that tells you, or maybe, let me just say it this way, you can calculate exactly how much. Another approach is to say that we still want to keep the demon decoupled from the system. But now we have learned something of an information about the system. Every time the demon did a measurement, it learned something about the position and the velocity of the molecules within the gas. And we want to include information measures into the thermodynamic description. And not only do we want to use this way to resolve the second law, but we want to also ask, can I really realize something like this and extract work from the system now that I have to a different heat reservoirs? So another thought experiment was done way back then, was done by Zillard, who suggested the following engine based on a Maxwell demon. And what he said is the following, let's assume I have a chamber filled with one gas molecule that is in thermal contact with the heat bath. And now I do a measurement or the the demon does a measurement and decides on which sides the molecule is. Is it on the left of the of the box or on the right? If it's on the left, it will attach a weight to the box in this direction. And if it's on the right, it will detach the weight in the other way. Now it leaves the system to get back to thermal equilibrium. And what is going to happen is that heat is going to go into your box. The gas is going to undergo, the single molecule gas is going to undergo isothermal expansion. And the the weight is going to be lifted. So by absorbing heat from the environment, this machine spontaneously provided work. So we extracted work from this machine. And then the demon, of course, detaches everything and you repeat from scratch. And in this configuration, you can actually calculate everything. You know, if this is an ideal gas, you know exactly how to calculate the work you extracted, which is by pushing this gas molecule all the way, by the gas pushing this partition all the way to the end, from half a volume to full volume. And this will give you a KBT LAN two. But you can also estimate the Shannon entropy, the information that you get out of the system. It's a one bit information that you measured. And so one bit is LAN two, it's a P LAN P, which is two. And then just the entropy is multiplied by K Boltzmann and then a temperature for units and you get that the extracted work that you got is exactly equal to the information that you obtained or you measured on the system. And so you can, in such a system of feedback and control, you can extend the second law of thermodynamics to include, in addition to the free energy and the extracted work, you can include also information measures. And this information measure is the mutual information or in a case where you don't have measurement error, this is the Shannon information or entropy that we've calculated here. So we are not the first to realize information engines. There were many realization of information engines in very different systems that I'm citing here only a few examples. But all of them were concentrated on a single particle. And so I start with telling you about our realization of an information engine, which is based on a single driven colloidal particle. And the idea we want to do is first of all, realize an information and thermal engine on a colloidal particle. And we want to ask what happens? What is the effect of temporal correlation? So all of the machines I showed you previously work on a quasi static conditions where every interference or measurement is done after the system is relaxed back to equilibrium. And I want to ask what happens if you don't let the system relax to equilibrium, but you want to measure faster to get more efficiency, to get maybe, or to get more power, output power. And so this was the main question. The experiments were done by my student Tamira Duman and with a long collaboration and all of this work that I'm telling you today with Professor Sarah Rahal from the Technion. So what is our idea? Our idea was the following, we have a system that is driven out of equilibrium. We have a colloidal particle that is driven in a channel of fluid. And then we put a wall made of light, which I have explained, we do with holographic optical tweezers in the repelling mode. So this particle has a lower refractive index than the environment and that's why it's repelling from the light. And our demon is a computer. So we take pictures of the system and whenever the colloid is close to the wall, we do nothing. And it's going to be pushed towards the wall because of the flow. But whenever it diffuses upstream, even if it's a rare event, we can now move the the wall. The potentials at work here are, because it's a 1D system, you can think of the flow as some sort of potential, inner potential. The optical potential you see here at green and the combination gives you some sort of a funny shaped and not symmetric potential well. So here we have the potential well, we have the wall, we have the friction from the flow. And here is the conditions of operation. We segment the space into chambers to make it easier for us to calculate things. And so there's chamber zero, which is very close to the potential to the wall. Then there is the the partition zero star, which is going to be our initial condition. And every time we we move the wall, we will move it to in a way that our particle will return to this chamber zero star. These are not real chambers in the system, of course, it's just a way for us to analyze the the behavior. If the particle diffuses upstream, then it will be in one of these positions. And then we take a picture and decide, do we move the wall or not? If it's here, we don't move the wall. If it's here, we move the wall. So here, in this case, it diffused upstream. We move the wall close to the particle but not touching. This is the zero star. We have constant or equivalent initial conditions every step of the way. And we continue to do this. If we do this many times, we have moved the the particle on average from being here to being here. There's a delta x that we've moved it against a flow. So this is movement against a force, this is work. So we've extracted work from the system without applying direct force on the particle at any stage of its motion. So the useful work that we've extracted is the final position minus the initial positions times the drag force. The direct work that we put in is this tail of of a potential that is not completely zero, in which we do affect a little bit when we move the wall, the particle, but this is negligible relatively. And we need to calculate the information. So what is the information that we gain if we do a measurement? So first of all, let me show you the experiment. So you're seeing here the bead, here the wall. In blue, you're seeing the entire trajectory, but let's start just playing the movie. You can see the particle diffusing. Sometimes we need to wait a long time until we can move the wall. In green, you see the wall. But sometimes you move the wall many times consecutively. And then just to prove to you that the particle is moving against the flow, what I'm going to do is I'm going to lift the wall and let the particle just move with the flow. This will also give you a feeling about how strong or how weak the flow is actually. So what you're seeing here is the trajectory of the particle, this is the trajectory of the wall. And with dotted the dashed lines, I'm showing you each time the wall moved, which is always the particle moves and then the wall is moving. And what you can see again is that there are occasions where the wall moves many times and sometimes that you need to wait a long time. And these long times are exponentially long. So you can calculate the first passage time, the the first time that the particle moved beyond the threshold and we moved the wall as a function of the probability. And you will see that if you measure really, really quickly, you can catch this initial rise on the first passage time, this peak. And so there's an increased probability that the particle will go upstream and cross the threshold when we just reset the system. But if you don't, if you don't, if it doesn't, if it goes the other way, it goes down the potential well and then it takes you an exponentially long time to escape the potential well. So in order to see what is the output power, we just need to measure what was the displacement of the particle. But in order to see the efficiency of the machine, we need to figure out what is the amount of information that we collected? Yes?
Can I ask a question? So this one, so when you move the wall, you generate some sort of a flow because of the motion of the wall itself? Which is opposed to your flow of fluid?
So let me see if I understood. You're asking if the wall affects the the fluid?
Yes, because you're sort of moving the wall in a direction that is opposite to the fluid flow.
So this is a very good question. So if if the wall was not made of light, it would have definitely created the flows and that would have been very dramatic. But because the wall is made of light and specifically of green light, it doesn't interact with the water at all, with the fluid at all. And so it's a no, no, so no, no flow, no currents are created. All right, so we need to to address what is the information that we gain from each measurement on average. But the problem here is that this is not necessarily in quasi static conditions. So there will be correlations in my measurements. If I measure very, very fast, I need to take it into account. Of course, when I move the particle back to the initial conditions, I erased all the memory. So all the information that I, that all the correlations that I need to take into account are in in the time where I'm waiting for the particle to cross the barrier and to be far enough for me to move the wall. So 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 therefore, I I can maybe simplify the calculation. If if I can't do this, just to make, to to stress, the actual information, Shannon information that I'm gathering in an experiment is the probability, LAN the probability, but this probability is the probability of the entire trajectory of the entire memory of the system, including all correlations. And if this were quasi static, there would be no correlations and it would be just the probability of one step to the power of the number of steps. But because this has correlations, because I want to look into the case where I'm measuring very fast, I have to somehow calculate this entire trajectory probability or measure it. So here is a measurement that I did. This is the the timestamp and this is the location of the particle. And now you can see that every once in a while, the particle managed to go beyond the barrier to some chamber or some position, position that is away from the threshold. And then I reset the system. So information was erased here in this spot where I reset the system and I returned the particle to zero. Same thing happened here, same thing happened here and here and here and wherever you have an arrow. But here there are correlations that are building up in in the system and I need to take them into account. So what I'm, what I'm going to do or what we did was to break up each of these trajectories into pieces of a of correlations. So I'm breaking whenever the correlation was erased or the wall was moved, I'm breaking that into a different partition. So here are my different partitions. And now I can write the average information per a step as a as a as a sum of all contributions. What happened if I had, if I measured the wall and it one instant and then immediately after I could move the wall again? What happened if I had to wait or what is the probability of me to having to wait one step in between moving the walls? What is the probability of me of having to wait two steps, three steps, four steps and so on? And and this series expansion will give me the average information per measurement. And so, okay, I won't go into all the details here, but we measured this. We had to use a lot of terms in this expansion, about 700 terms of the expansion to measure. So we had to do some simulations to to extend the amount of statistics that we had. But in the end, we were able to look at the information in green that we acquired as a function of how fast we measure. So this is the time between measurements and this is either information in green, extracted work per time in a in red and the actual work that we did because of the optical forces in blue. And so you can see there's an order of magnitude difference. This is relatively a very clean information machine. And then we calculated the efficiency of the machine as a function of the frequency of measurements and the output power. And what we learned from this is a lesson for life. You can be very, very efficient if you have patience and you wait a lot between every a measurement. So this would be, being lazy is very efficient. However, if you're that efficient, your output power is zero. So on the other hand, if you want to get everything you can from the machine, your output power can be high, but your efficiency is very low. So there's always a sweet spot between laziness and 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 output. And so this was the the result of this work. And you could do this varying the threshold and get the same results basically. So so far, I've shown you that you can create a colloidal based Maxwell demons or information engines. The setup that we did could be tuned to do very clean conversion of information to work. We could tune the measurement time, then the frequency of the measurements and change the efficiency and the output power. But measuring frequency
Hello? Sorry, I have a question. Whatever you're saying, this information is actually mutual information, is it? Or I'm wrong?
Yes, so the actual information that you need to take into account usually is the mutual information. However, it can be shown in cases where you have no measurement error that this is equivalent to the Shannon entropy or the Shannon information. And this is one of the reasons why we did the position, not in the exact position where we measured with a measurement error, but we placed the particle within a discrete area in space where we could be pretty sure without measurement error that the particle is really there.
Okay.
Um, okay, so measuring frequency increases power output, but this comes at the expense of efficiency. So this is a single particle information engine working on a driven colloid. What happens if you want to work on many particles? So this is a movie of a quasi static now information engine that works on a a collection of colloidal particles. So you're seeing the colloidal particles here are diffusing. This is work done by Gilad Polak, student in my group. And and once in a while you measure, and this is a box made of light. So this box is a a made of light and it's repelling the particles, so they are confined to space. And we measure and look for a situation in which there is some free space near the wall. And whenever that happens, hopefully. Well, whenever that happens, we move the wall, not wait here. So this is the model system, you have particles and and whenever you have a free space, you move the wall a little bit in. This information engine is very different from the previous one because this one or in a way, it's different because this one contains the particles. So when you, when you move the wall, you actually compress the gas. So when you, when you move the wall, you actually compress the gas. So you're with, what you're doing is you're storing energy without actually applying forces. It's a little bit different than, than what we did before, which was performing work. So P1 is the probability that you can indeed move the wall for a while. The number of measurement until you do the feedback is on average, one over P1, the probability to move the wall. And the work per measurement, which is what we want to focus on this part of the talk, is the output power divided by the average number of measurements, which is the probability of, of, of moving the wall times the output power. And what we wanted to know is how large should you choose this volume or this area to be to optimize the efficiency or maybe even more interesting to open, optimize the work done per measurement? So what we did, we started with computer simulations and not with the experiment I showed you before. We used Langrangian dynamics with soft walls. The pressure here is the osmotic pressure because we're talking about colloids and it's the average force along this line. And the probability to move the wall was, was measured by looking at the leftmost particle and making sure that this is not within the volume that we want to compress. And so now what you're seeing here is this probability of moving the wall some delta x. Sorry, what you're seeing here is the probability of finding a particle near the wall as a function of position. And, and you can see that as the more particles you have, the higher probability to find them near the wall. Okay, so now we want to use this simulation to calculate the efficiency. And for this, you need to know the, the direct work you put in, which is zero, really negligible in our case. The output power that is here in the dashed line and the information, now the information is very easy to calculate. By information, we just look at the probability to move the wall time. So the Shannon information, P and P, where P can be either the P1, the, the probability to move the wall, or one minus P1. There's only two possible measurements. You can move the wall or you can't move the wall. So this is I and it's measured here and you get the behavior of the efficiency as a function of the size of the volume that you can compress. And you can also look at the average work per measurement as a function of the, the total box size or the density, if you want, and as a function of the displacement and you get some sort of these curves. But in thermal equilibrium, you can do something better. You can show that the output power depends only on this probability. And therefore, you can recast the work per measurement, not in terms of delta x of the volume, but in terms of the probability to move the wall or the probability that this delta x will be free. And if you do that, so you look at the average work per measurement divided by Kt normalized as a function of the probability of your delta x, everything, including the analytical solution falls on a master curve up to some numerical errors, which means that, well, as you know, in equilibrium, there are things behave nicely. So there's a master curve. There is, you can tell immediately on this configuration that you will always get the optimal work per, work per, for measurement if you are at the peak here. And this is, doesn't matter what your size of the box is or what the delta x is, you just need to make sure that the probability to find that area empty is this value here. Okay. So, so this is what I can tell you about equilibrium many body information.
Hello? So in the previous slide you show some distribution. Is this, is this, for the, what are these numbers? Like you vary the size of the particles or this one?
What I'm varying here is the size of the box or the density of the, the density of the gas or they're not the gas, the colloidal particles.
So the previous slide also like that, that you have different, there are some distribution with that?
Yeah, yeah. It's also, it's also changing the box size. So as I increase the size of this box or as I move this wall to compress the box, things change because the internal pressure goes up. Right? So, so what I meant, maybe I should have clarified here. What I'm asking is a work per measurement for moving the wall in specifically this volume, specifically this batch. Now if I compressed it and I want to do a second compression, the pressure increased already here, everything changed and I have to calculate from scratch. And what we found out is that instead of calculating was, what is your volume, how many particles do you have, what is the delta x that you want? All you need to do is calculate at which delta x, the probability to move the wall will be exactly one over E. And that is what is maximizing this curve.
Okay. And this analytical calculation is like a hard sphere of death. So what is analytical prediction?
Well, the analytical calculation is using the fact that this is a, a system in equilibrium and that you can relate entropy and probability of finding things everywhere into the work and the free energy. And it's very straightforward. So this was equilibrium and as I said, it's straightforward and relatively easy. But now let's look at active matter based systems, which are more complex. So why look at active matter information engines at all? So first of all, you can think of futuristic miniature engines working at natural active systems. What am I thinking? I, I still have this movie from when I was a kid where there was a submarine that was miniaturized and inserted into a human being in order to fix something there or to do something there. And I'm dreaming of this machine going in some active life system. But to be more practical, if you have a pond of bacteria, would it make sense to operate, to make a machine operating on these bacteria? If you have, you are a molecular motor, do you need to use the activity of yourself or the environment in order to, to move? Does it make a sense? So this is sort of why it's interesting to look at these. Another reason is the other way around. Information engines are, are, are very well described thermodynamically and they use information as a well-defined variable even out of equilibrium. So we could use that as a handle to explain or to characterize systems that are far from thermal equilibrium. So this is the other way around. And so basically, it might be advantageous to do so. And so this is why we went to, to study, to look at this. And our active system is a very simple system. It's a toy. It's called Hexbug. It is about four and a half centimeters long. It has legs that are flexible and it has inside a battery and a motor that rotates. And here you see a slow motion of this bug and what you can see how it's rotating and by that vibrating and by hitting the floor, jumping. And it, it can move obstacles around, is fast enough to do many, many interesting things. So this is our active matter. It uses electrical energy from the battery and converts it to motion like, like any active system. One example of showing how this can mimic or be interesting and different from equilibrium systems is, let's look at a single colloidal particle trapped in an optical harmonic well. You can see that it's fluctuating and it's fluctuating because of the fluid molecules that are bumping into it. Here we have this harmonic potential gravitational well and we have a Styrofoam ball. And if we let it sit in the ball, it doesn't move because it's too heavy for the air molecules to bump it. However, if I add my Hexbugs into it, they act as if they are a, a fluid or a gas of active molecules and they do move the ball very similar to my trapped colloid. And now you can ask, how similar is it? And, and this is an experiment of a fluctuation dissipation experiment that actually measures what does this thing really behave like it has a new kind of temperature? So this is the sort of system, the activity that we're looking into quantifying using information engines. Another way to see that these are interesting is here, what you're seeing is free expansion or not exactly free, but expansion against the force of a, a gas of these active systems. And you can see that it really does have this ability to expand the wall. So very much like you would think of a gas of a regular molecule. So now we want to revisit the Zillard engine, but instead of having one particle, we want to have many particles. We are still going to ask the same question in terms of information, just one bit information. Are there more particles on the left than on the right? And then that's the entire difference. So instead of having one molecule and asking where it is, we have many and we ask, where do we have more? And according to that, we hook up our weight. And it's not clear anymore that the output power will be equal to the information. Actually, it's obvious that you won't be able to move the wall all the way to the end. So probably this is not true. We're going to get less work out. And for this, we need to calculate the integral over PDV, which is again in active systems, not very clear how to do. So here is my Zillard engine. I have a particle and it's in the wall and I have this information demon that is asking on which side is the particle, heat comes in, work comes out. We've seen this. We can also do the same for many particles. We have many particles, we put the partition, we measure each side. The denser side is going to push the partition away and there's going to be some change in volume, but not all the way to the end. To implement this experimentally in an active system, we took a half circle here, field of particles. We can insert a partition that divides this into two parts. And then this partition is, can move according to the pressure that these active particles apply on it. The reason we do it in a circular way is because of, of the fact that this was the easiest way we found to reduce friction on the partition. So let's see, what, what do we intuitively do we expect from this system? So if this is slightly a more dense, then I expect the, the partition to move in this way with some change in volume delta V. This change in volume will be determined by when the pressure on the left and the right side are going to be equal. And provided that our gas behaves like a ideal gas or something of the sort, it will be, the pressure will be monotonous in the density of the particles. And so we, we expect this to, this delta V to be determined by equal density at both sides. So the, the number of particles on the left divided by the left volume should be equal to the right and the number of particles on the right divided by the volume on the right. And so, yes?
So when you're doing this free expansion experiment using these Hexbug robots, could in principle, could one calculate a B-B diagram and see how different it is from an ideal gas?
Yes. Yes, bear with me, we will do that. So yes, so the, the final volume at equilibrium on the left side will be the total volume divided by two plus this delta V and the other way around. And the same goes for the particles. And now if you put everything here inside, what you get is that the change in a volume is proportional to the change in the number of particles. So basically what I'm saying here is that the amount of work on average that you can extract must depend on the number fluctuations in your system. So this is what, what we had in mind when we started working on, on the system. And then we want to extract work. So in the end, we, so this is just saying something about how the number fluctuations are related to the volume. One step ahead is going to calculate the actual work that we extract. And we find that all of these parameters depend on the number of fluctuations on delta N, which means that the work extracted on average depends on delta N and, and this is what we want to calculate. Okay. So looking at a single Zillard engine, again, ideal gas equilibrium. For one particle, we know we have the maximal efficiency. This is given by the Landauer limit. If we measure one bit of information, the maximum output we can get is K Boltzmann-Tilent two. If I have many body, a, a systems, then the number of particles on the left of the system is given by a binomial distribution. And okay, if I denote, denote K by the difference between that number and half the number of the total particles, I can actually calculate exactly the output power for an ideal gas. It's not surprising. If I take N to infinity, interestingly enough, it's true that the fluctuations, as you increase the thermodynamic, to defer thermodynamic numbers of molecules, the fluctuations decrease, but they decrease only in relation to the number of particles, not in, in general. So you go from a half, a KT Lant two to a limit of half KBT. So if I plot the work, average work I can extract from a Zillard engine, as the number of particles increase, I, I, I get a decrease from a single particle towards infinity. And there's a well-defined limit to that. What happens in active systems? Is that the same? So let me show you the experiment because it's so much fun. And it also gives you an intuition about what happens to the partition. And so I hope you're impressed with the fact that the partition moves a lot. It is not just slightly fluctuating around an average value. So if I actually plot the position of the partition, you can see for different numbers of particles, how the partition fluctuate. So in, in orange or in blue, you see the actual position of the, the partition. And then in these darker lines, you see the running average and you can see that it ends in a, with a well-defined average. So there is a, an, a mechanical equilibrium position that it wants to be at, but it fluctuates also a lot. And if you do, repeat that for different numbers of particles, you can actually plot a, the number, the volume to the right divided by, so the volume fraction of particles to the right divided, as a function of the number, a fraction of particles to the right and you see that this is monotonous. So basically what I'm telling you is that really the equilibrium position that we end, the mechanical equilibrium position that we end at is that of equal density in both sides, which is not surprising. It just says that the pressure is probably monotonous with density. Now we measure the number fluctuations for small numbers and larger numbers. And at least for larger numbers, it's very obvious that an ideal gas distribution is much narrower than the number fluctuations in these active systems. If you look at the number fluctuation as a function of, of the number of, of particles, you see that it increases very much even with a power, high power law for a active systems as opposed for a ideal gas, which it remains, you know, with the thermodynamic and non-value. This in a way should make you recall that many active and driven systems have giant number fluctuations. And this is what we mean by that, that the number fluctuations are larger than the ones expected for an ideal gas. Was there a question? So now we want to measure the pressure in order to extract the, the work. We need to know, yes?
This is the Russian. But how do you actually see the number fluctuation and give the particles which we have crossed the boundary, right? So maybe because I think that I was...
Okay. So the number fluctuations, yes, it's a, it's a good question. So basically every time you put the wall, there is a, a number of, of particles that, if you take the wall out and put it in, insert a partition, then there would be a, a random number of particles to the right and a random number of particles to the left. So you you need to measure this. Instead of actually taking in and out the partition every time, what we did is we just took a long movie of these particles and measured every time. What was the average number of particles on the right or what was the nu- the probability distribution of particles on the right and on the left? And from that, we could extract the number fluctuations. So by number fluctuations, I'm I'm actually talking about this. Where was it? Eh about this delta N, which is the number of particles to the right minus the number of particles to the left.
And so in the in this case, do you actually uh measure the pressure?
Yes, this is where I was going to. Now we're going to measure the pressure eh of of exerted on this partition as a function of the number of particles inside or the density.
Okay, okay. And just one more thing, uh so this uh when you were showing this for the active gas and for the ideal gas, the ideal gas experiments are more interesting. So is it just that power that is not it that we then?
Uh, for we actually, we did, we didn't perform this with eh the experiments with ideal gas. This is just a calculation.
Because there is a there is a deviation because of activity, but there's also a deviation because of excluded volume, right?
Right, right. Let's discuss this in a second.
So so may I ask another question? So so in this slide, it seems like a N equals six. The things match between active and ideal, ideal gas.
Yeah, it's not very different. It's true. With the low number of particles, the behavior is not very different.
So why is that like so special about six or whatever like that number?
I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
I mean, is there any, you you know, why?
Oh, why? Uh, first of all, small numbers are small numbers. This is one thing. But the other thing is eh is, okay, let me show you the movie again. Um, you will see that there is a tendency of particles to aggregate. And this tendency tendency to aggregate so causes this number giant, the giant number fluctuations. And the tendency to aggregate increases as the number of particles increases.
I see. So 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 they they're starting directing more like when they're more coming.
Yes.
Like direction. Okay, alright, thank you.
So as correctly stated, the the next thing we have, once we have the number fluctuations, we must, in order to calculate work, we must know what the pressure is. So we wanted to measure pressure. And when we started doing this, we used a Piso force gauge and we saw eh signals that look a little bit like this. It was really hard to determine what is a collision head on, what is a collision from the side? Uh, is it a collision or is it eh eh you can see here, something that might look like decaying oscillations of the actual device measures. So it wasn't so clear. So what we had to do is to find a way to estimate the pressure more correctly. And what we did is we looked at, we organized a system in which we have head on collisions of bugs towards eh the eh towards the the measure, the gauge. Eh in a way that was very clear. Here, every collision is a very clear collision and we can calculate the impulse impulse eh of the bug on that eh eh ma- eh gauge. And then we um also correlated the impulse that we measured on the peak height and we saw that they are eh correlated. So now, if we go back to 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 this measurements, we can just look at these peaks and say that they are collisions, that the top peaks are collisions. And then we know how much energy on average is passed or how much impulse is passed on each collision. So we can estimate the pressure from here. It's not an exact number, but it's a good estimation, at least if the system is not dense. And if you look here at the measurement as a function of the density, the pressure is a function of a density, you can see that initially it begins more or less linear. Eh, measured with different systems of different particle numbers. Uh, but as the density increases, eh we get a deviation from this linearity. And it's not clear clear if this deviation comes from an underestimation of two collisions here, maybe there was another one here that we missed. And that would cause this decay. If this is the case, we need to treat the linear line as as the truth. Or is there some decay in the in the the relation of pressure to density? Eh, as we increase the density and then we would maybe fit this dashed line as as the pressure. So this is yeah.
So there's one clarification. So the pressure you are measuring is the difference between pressure on two sides. Or is it the net pressure on the wall?
No, this is actually the real net pressure on the wall, on one side, on one side.
On one, on any one side.
Yeah, on any of the sides. If you if you eh look at these results, they tell you that the 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 relation between and the a volume fraction and number eh fraction is equal, it means that the wall is stopping exactly at the right position. So we are sure that the wall, if if you look at the the change in 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 volume eh, the partition is is really um stopping when the density is equal in both sides. But we wanted to know the actual pressure or to get a measure of the actual pressure that it applies on a wall, not just to see that they equilibrate.
And and sorry, so if I measure the deviation, does it start at the same uh number of particles where you start seeing the deviation from the ideal gas?
Uh, no, not clearly, because I I would say that it's about fifteen.
Okay. So because I think I saw that distribution was same at nineteen.
And and we saw that at nineteen is already very strong and six was already started to show differences.
Okay, I see.
So I don't think this is the source, but we don't we don't know. So what we decided is we decided to use it both these relations in order to see what goes on. Um, all right, uh, so now using both of these relations and using the number fluctuations that we've measured, we could look, we could calculate the eh average work extracted divided by some eh for for an ideal gas, the calculated one is divided by K Boltzmann T. For the active gas, it was divided by the appropriate eh energy measure according to these eh eh equations. But what you can see is that in both cases, the work per measurement increases as the number of particle increases, which is completely the opposite of what happens in ideal gas. So potentially, it's very useful to have these large number of eh giant number fluctuations in these systems because that means working in large baths, in large systems, we will get even more. And this is sort of the the main result of this eh analysis. I want to give you some uh intuition about why this must be true. Uh, we, when we say many, we talk about nineteen or twenty eh objects. But there is this famous nature paper by the groups of Olivier Duchaux and Denis Portolone, eh where they looked at active colloids in a horse eh rack eh and um when you let them eh flow, so these are active particles, they self organize into a one very strong eh 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 aggregate that moves together. There there's an emergent of of collective motion. This is eh when you see it from afar, it's even more impressive when you see it eh close by. So this is zoom and you see the wave of correlated particles coming eh along. So this is what happens when you go up to very, very high eh eh numbers. So this is why we accept this, expect this to keep going up and up and up. So to sum this, to sum up, uh, okay, not to sum up this part. Um, okay, so let me just just eh say in summary that this is a good motivation to to study eh active matter information engines, because they might be actually very beneficial in terms of work per measurement. Uh, eh eh of course, provided that they exhibit giant number fluctuations. Last, I have a few more minutes, I think, uh, to tell you eh a little bit about what happens if you look at driven or active matter. Eh, is there is is there a different or in another way? Does it matter on which active system are you operating your engine? So this is again eh doing simulations, at least right now. Uh, and it's work in preparation. Uh, so what you're seeing here is a simulation of just active eh passive colloids diffusing in a box. We're going back to that box eh configuration. Here, you're seeing particles that are driven in a random manner. So we are giving them random kicks. And uh, so they diffuse much faster. But you could also think of them as active particles that um are sort of like a run and tumble. They 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 forget where they are every step of the way. And these are active particles that are more similar to to the hex bugs. They have directionality, they have persistent. So they walk persistently, but their the orientation is eh eh is diffusing. And already here, when you look at the distribution of the particles eh in space, in these eh eh simulations, you can see that the active particles tend to be close to the walls and it's well known and understood. Uh, where the activated particles or the the random particles span the system very similar to those of the passive particles. And eh one number that we need to take into account is a Pcl number. It calculates the advection or it describes the adventure eh the the intensity or the strength of the advection as of eh opposed to the diffusion. So how much advection you have eh versus diffusion. And what we made sure is that these two active system or driven and active systems are operating in the same Pcl number. So their advection there is similar. It's just the mode of motion which is different. And if you eh plot the density distribu- the probability distribution of finding the particles eh near the wall, you will see that for uh the active particles in blue, you have a high probability to see them near the walls, as we saw in the simulation in the movie. And whereas the random particles in the eh 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 in red and the equilibrium particles in black, they are very similar. The the distribution is only slightly different. So now you can extract, you you can calculate what is the average uh work per step that you you have in these systems as a function of delta X eh. And this is um in equilibrium, you see here the 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 dashed line. Eh, in the activated, the randomly activated particles, you see the red line is very similar. Eh, but in the active systems, you can extract a lot more work per step. And uh what I have to, so so what 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 we conclude in this is that um it doesn't only you, it it's not enough for you to be active, but it matters which kind of activity you have in relations to how you extract work. Because if you want to extract work by moving a wall and your particles tend to be near the wall, except or they tend to be all around your system evenly, that will make a very big difference. And so, yes. No, I thought I had a question. And so, so what we're saying is that it's very important eh the type of activity that you have. We now want to go to take this movie and go ahead and eh and eh and and create it in a in a hex bag system. So what we did is we we took a an arena, we put the bugs in, we took a laser and a detector. And eh we hooked them into a motor. And now whenever the bugs are blocking the motor, this wall stops. The motor stops, eh sorry, whenever these bugs are blocking the laser, this motor stops and nothing happens. But whenever they're far away, there's nothing near the blocking the laser light and the motor compresses the chamber. So here it's is how it looks like. And this is a realization of of this eh information engine um that we were discussing now in simulations and we hope to have a result, experimental results from this very soon. So in conclusion, what I had to tell you today is that um equilibrium information engines have universal features, which we've seen. There is a typical eh eh there's a limit to how much work you can extract. There is a typical eh probability that you would like to use. It is worthwhile thinking of active matter information engines. They give you very different behaviors. Uh, out of equilibrium, it really matters how energy is injected into the system, not just how much. And uh, this eh is partly due to the fact that active particles, when I talk about active, I mean active Brownian particles like we have, uh, they stick to the wall. And this might allow us to get how po- high power information engines eh out of them. And with this, I'd like to thank eh you for listening, my group, my collaborators and funding.
Thank you, Professor Rajan. Uh, we have time for the questions. Yeah, uh, one person, I just wanted to understand why you have this phenomenon of aggregation for this active color of this one sort of uh near the wall?
Sorry, why did I have what?
Uh, this tendency to have this aggregation near the wall or.
Ah, okay, why is it, why does it happen? Yes, okay, so um eh, the type of active matter that we have is a is similar to what is modeled as active Brownian particles. These are persistent particles. So the the hex bugs, for instance, they're persistent, so they go ahead until they eh find a wall. Now, eh in order to escape the wall, they need to change their orientation. And because there's a, they're not perfectly elastic and because they have a shape. Uh, so they they start, for for the hex bugs, they start bumping until they al- align and then they stay near the wall. For the active Brownian particles, their director needs to diffuse it away in order for them to escape. And this takes time and this is why they spend so much time near the wall.
Yeah, so yeah, the active particles stick to the wall. But what if you make it into a reflective wall condition of sorts? I mean, the persistence is still there, but it just bounces off the wall. Would that be anything different? Yeah, we should see something different than like.
I'm I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
Uh, so the previous slide, so you said the active particles stick to the wall, right? But I'm saying let it not stick, but the persistence be there. But let it reflect off the wall, the bounce off the wall. So in that case, will it start acting more like a uh driven particle?
So I would say the following, um sticking to the wall is one one way of them to be different. Another way is to aggregate or to form any kind of collective motion. So in in our system, sticking to the wall was eh significant and 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 made a change. And many of these active particles, they they tend to walk along boundaries. But even if you didn't have that, um, they still aggregate, they they still behave differently. However, if you find a system of active particles that doesn't aggregate and spreads equally uh more or less evenly in the room, like these randomly activated particles, they might look like um equilibrium, but we actually were able to show that the work per eh measurement eh behaves differently. It it's not eh necessarily eh bitter, but it just has eh 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 it doesn't follow, for example, on a master curve.
I think there is one question hand raised by one of the online participants. Can you unmute yourself and answer the question?
Am I audible?
Yes.
Uh, first of all, thanks a lot for this fascinating talk. Uh, so my first question was like a sort of general, which is uh, which is also about the first part of the talk where uh uh, so so when. eh, so, so when there is a eh, demon acting eh, on a system, so the demon must be working between two temperatures, right? Like eh, so it, it, it must be coupled to a, another heat bath that is at a lower temperature than the colloid itself. So eh, if, if I understand correctly, if the eh, if the feedback system is working as a demon, then eh, what will be the notion of the effective temperature of the feedback system? Eh, which, which, which has to be lower than that of the colloid?
Um, eh, I will say the following. Since we are using eh, the approach of information eh, measures on non-equilibrium, we are actually not concerned with the other, with, with what happens to the demon. But actually, our demon is a computer. Eh, it actually eh, creates a lot of heat, much more than just erasing each bit of memory that it keeps. So I would, I would think about this a little different and say that the eh, not that it's coupled to a cold bath, but that it is allowed to produce as much entropy as it wants, eh, because it's decoupled to the system and it does indeed produce a lot of entropy.
Okay, okay. Okay, eh, thanks a lot. And eh, I, I had another question eh, about the last part of your talk, where eh, you're talking about these bugs. So eh, as you said, as you mentioned, that if there is any sort of a collective behavior, so we are eh, supposed to see these eh, giant fluctuations coming about. So let's say if you could put some alignment eh, between the robots or something. Eh, so do you think that the eh, work will increase eh, something like that? Like eh, other than just like excluded volume or like eh, eh, just contact eh, interactions? If you.
Eh, yes, so I would say the following, eh, where was that? Um. Yeah, so, so, so I think the work depends on the number fluctuations. And if you can increase the number fluctuations, anyway, you choose, eh, that will allow you, at least in this type of eh, system, to extract eh, more work. In, but I think it's also true for the other setup. I think it's true for, for, for many of the systems. Because if you have alignment and all of these things are driven towards the wall, then they apply a lot of pressure, more than average on the wall, only that it's a rare event that they apply it. So there's a competition between how rare is your eh, number fluctuation and how effective it is in moving your wall or, or performing your work. Um. With giant number fluctuations, what you're saying is that the eh, probability of having this large deviation, this large fluctuation is high. And, and that's why I think it's, it will be helpful to have some alignment or whatever you want.
Right, right, thanks a lot.
Eh, I had one question, so eh, eh, about the, the last part of the work. So eh, the experiments with the active particles, so eh, like the, these particles, like this, robots have a, an isotope. So they will tend to align more with the label. So I was wondering if this experiment is done for like active Brownian particles, which are more like momentum type, which are like, like this, and eh.
Yes, so.
Would have a tendency to align with the label, but they are active.
Yes.
Wonder how this, will there be change in the result, particularly if we look at the pressure? So the eh, there will be a deviation eh, like how will, how will the pressure be from that of like eh, like this ideal eh, pressure which you were showing in the previous slide?
So I, so I have two answers for this. One is that eh, if you see this simulation of active Brownian particles, they are spherical eh, but they don't align, they don't really aggregate, but they do stick to the walls eh, which means, and, and the reason they stick it to a wall, as I said, is because they're trying to go towards the wall. The wall is stopping them and it takes them, the, their director time to diffuse away. So eh, that's why they apply a lot of pressure the, the, on the wall. A- actually, they, they, if, if, if I could have measured the pressure in the center of the box and not on the walls, I would have measured something different. Only the moment I put a wall there, they will start attaching to it and, and, and I'll feel that. Um. Eh, and in terms of can it be done eh, okay, so we measured here in simulations and we saw that the pressure is much higher, the work per eh, the work per step is, is much bigger. Eh, but the probability to move the wall is much weaker. So we are relying in active systems on rare events. Um, what we are going to do in the lab soon is to eh, realize this eh, system in experiment. So taking, actually taking active Brownian particles in an experiment and with tweezers eh, and we hope to get from this more, you know, real results and not just simulations.
Okay, okay, thank you. So let us thank Professor Royson for this beautiful talk. So um, so we'll take a fifteen-minute break and then assemble back for eh, for second.
Thank you again.
Thank you, thanks.